Welcome, everybody. We don't get to see a lot of faces out that way staring back at us, so we're glad to have a little bit of public input tonight. Welcome to the planning commission meeting for November 20th. We've got six members of the commission present tonight. Commissioner Luthy is excused for the evening. We'll go ahead and just jump right in. Our first item up on the agenda tonight is our consent calendar, talking about the minutes from our previous meeting. Any conversation, discussion, motions? Commissioner England.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Thomas.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner England to approve the minutes, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Any discussion to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are unanimous on that, thank you. Next up, our business item tonight is the New Bingham Highway Connector Study between Jordan Landing and 5600 West. Bill Bernowski, I'll let you kick this one off and introduce our consultant.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the pleasure of hearing from Thomas McMurtry. He's a consultant with Avenue Engineering. And we received over $100,000 to do a corridor study on New Bingham Highway between 56 West and Jordan Landing. And we worked a lot with the high school. And we talked about a lot of the issues that occur along that corridor. And the timing of this study was really good because traffic has changed a lot on New Bingham Highway over the summer with the addition of the airport project on 78 South. So I'll let Thomas, he's got a pretty good slideshow. And we'll try and explain the study and watch some video and answer any questions that come up.
In 1971, there was a sociologist named Murray Davis at the University of Chicago. And he wrote a paper called "That's Interesting." And in the paper, what he said was that ideas are carried forward not because they're true, not because they're great, but rather because they're interesting. And he goes on to define interestingness as ideas that buck conventional thinking and challenge our weakly held assumptions. Right? So basically that they're innovative. And this is true in a lot of the work that you see UDOT doing. The projects that get funded and carried forward are almost always like the biggest and the coolest and the most innovative. Like the legislature likes funding those type of things. I tell you this story for two reasons. One is I think that this particular project on New Bingham Highway falls into that category. I think it's particularly interesting and very different than a lot of the transportation projects you'll see. And two, it's my hope that at least I can maybe be a little bit interesting tonight and capture kind of your attention. Commissioners, so I'll talk a little bit about New Bingham Highway and the corridor we were looking at. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that hopefully it's not too much on the long side and I can maybe go quickly through some of this stuff. So this was the corridor we looked at. Not only did it include New Bingham Highway, but it specifically also included Grizzly Way. So again, this is from kind of Jordan Landing going west out to 56 West. And it included Grizzly Way around Copper Hills High School, but also around the middle school on the north side, too. We had a couple of key study goals which you can kind of see up on the screen. The big thing, though, was we really wanted to look at some innovative solutions to reimagine the street, to integrate active transportation solutions that the students and the pedestrians and the bicyclists out there could take advantage of and use and it be safe form. And then, two, we really wanted to focus on the engagement. Bill mentioned that we worked with the high school. We had a bunch of meetings with not only high school, like the principal and the administration, but also with individual students. And then finally, any ideas that we came up with, any solutions that we developed, we wanted them to be specifically implementable and not to impact any property owners. So we had to work within the right of way. We didn't want to touch any yards or impact any homes. And we were able to accomplish that. A little bit of background on the study. We went out and we did a bunch of traffic counts. So we put tubes down and we did intersection counts. And we developed, these are turning movement counts for the peak hour. And I just wanted to point like one thing out to you. And that is this number of 232. And that's the number of pedestrians that cross New Bingham Highway every afternoon or in the peak period. And specifically, they're conflicting with over 1,000 cars that want to travel through there. And we have to allow for these 232. And they're mostly students, right? So whether they're high school or middle school students, but they're students that are kind of crossing at that crosswalk right there. And so that is concerning to us and certainly was a big part of kind of what we were looking at in terms of the traffic. I don't know if this will play. The cameras, the way we did the traffic counts, by the way, was we mounted cameras to the poles and we recorded video of it. And then we watched the video and counted how many cars. I wonder if this will play, maybe it won't. Yeah, I think I hit the next button. I just wanted to show you a little bit of video and it didn't play. I have the video. Yeah, can you hit the play button? And actually, I wanted to jump forward about 30 seconds because the first intersection we looked at was not this one. It doesn't, it's on YouTube. It's also on the project website, which I have included. So if you wanted to go watch the videos. But they're interesting. This particular video shows two little girls with pink bicycles crossing. As soon as they get across, a semi truck goes right past them. You know, they're just crossing, going out there and they had a cone. And it was fine, but it just shows you the conflicts that kind of exist in this area. I showed you the individual traffic counts. This is the daily. So if we look at the total number of cars a day, and this was counted last year in 2018, and it's different now. But we had 31,000 up here. But the most of the corridor from the railroad out towards the high school is in that 15,000 to 20,000 range. And it's showing as level service C, which basically means that it's well under the capacity of the road. Right? So we have a big wide road and we have less cars and is taking up the capacity, right? We're at about 50% capacity. The capacity of a road like this is about 35,000. And we're getting about 15,000 to 20,000 cars a day out there. We also specifically looked at all the crashes in the area. Again, safety wasn't concerned. The good news is in the last five years, from 2013 through 2018, while there were 200 crashes, there were no fatal crashes. We didn't have a single fatality out there. Now, in talking to folks, they told me about a couple of fatalities that had happened prior to this, right? There was a story of a girl driving a truck that got T-boned and hit and killed. But that happened in like September of 2011. So it's not in these particular five years of crashes. But it was still, you know, still concerning. But there were seven pedestrian-related crashes. All of those resulted in at least some injury, although none of those had severe injuries either. So we were lucky there. I can tell you that one of them was at this intersection going to school. So two of them were entering school. They were at like 7:30 to 8:00 AM, right at that timeframe. And one of them was at this intersection. And the other one is this dot right here is also a ped that's a minor injury crash. And then there was another one exiting school at about, it was like 2:35. And that one was right over here. The other ped crashes, there were two that happened at night. One that happened on a rainy day in July. And so they probably weren't school-related per se, but still something that we looked at on the corridor. Parking was, is, I guess, a huge issue around the high school. Specifically, the parking lot, as you can see in this first photo, is largely full every day. They don't give parking permits to sophomores to, you know, because there's not enough spaces for the sophomores to park. But the sophomores that get driver's license throughout the year then want to drive to school and then are parking on the streets and other places. This photograph, we took these drone aerials on the 18th of April. And they show that, you know, not only is Grizzly Way just lined with cars on both sides, but there's a bunch of cars in the neighborhood for high school students. And there's a bunch that are parked here at the church that are walking to the high school. This is largely concerning because when the kids exit the car, they just walk across the street. And they're conflicting with the other kids that are driving to the school, right? So there's kids driving in, there's just a bunch of kids that's kind of running willy-nilly across the street. And again, that creates a safety issue of all the kids that are just parking wherever. And so parking was something we wanted to look at. Again, I've got really cool drone video of what the parking looks like. It's on YouTube, I'm sure it won't play, but it's pretty impressive. I think it's cool video. If you, it's, yeah, it's a link to a YouTube clip. It's, again, it's on the website, which I'll tell you about here. But again, it's something, one of the existing conditions we wanted to address. The corridor is changing and it has changed since we did this study. The big thing was the north realigned to a T-intersection up here and 78th was continued and extended out, right? So that Y-split where all of the, you know, the westbound traffic could go in either direction, but the eastbound traffic only came up New Bingham Highway, created that really high volume on this end. And we actually ran models that once that was going to change, we were going to see a dramatic traffic shift on all of New Bingham Highway. We were looking at about 7,000 cars a day that were potentially going to move off of New Bingham Highway and now would stay on 78th because that's the arterial going through once that change was happening. And then there's also a plan to extend New Bingham Highway across Mountain View Corridor and put a bridge over it and continue it on to 86 South. And then that would then drive traffic up a little bit, right? Where right now it just tees into 5600 West. So these were certainly considerations going into the future when we wanted to look at what we were planning for. This is a photograph I took yesterday out there. I made sure I got a helicopter in the picture. But this is what it looks like on New Bingham Highway, you know, heading back towards 78 South. And so what that means for future traffic is that we actually anticipate the future traffic being less than today's traffic because of those configurations, right? Because it is no longer going to be the main arterial carrying people east and out of this part of West Jordan. Rather, it's going to serve more like a local street where it just tees into 78th, which is the arterial, right? So the people that use the road are the people that live there, go to the high school or whatever. And so the number of through trips of people that live west of here that are just going east is going to go down. And you can see, we modeled this into the future with multiple configurations. I want to show this one, this is a three lane. So we modeled that as a three-lane road. So what if we took travel lanes away in lane three? Would it still function well? And you can see, it's still green, so it's level service C. And the volumes that we're getting out there are in the 14,000 to 12,000 range, which if you go out there and count it today, it would be, I think, exactly what you would see. Right? Now that we have that new configuration, I would expect volumes to be in that 10,000 to 14,000 range. Right? The good news there is that now we have the opportunity to really think about what type of corridor do we want to have, right? Because we know it's, we've got more capacity than we need for not just today's traffic, but also traffic into the future. And so that was a lot of what our study was about, right? How can we think up good options for this corridor that can accommodate, you know, existing and future traffic, but make it safer for students and then also accommodate bicycles and pedestrians? So we came up with a couple of different approaches to developing options. I mentioned that we went into the high school. This is a photograph of me standing at the high school, talking to the high school students in the commons area. That was a lot of fun. So we talked to high school students on two different occasions. And they were great, they love coming up and talking to you. I probably talked to 200 or 300 students in, you know, the four or five hours that was camp there in the commons. And we held some brainstorming sessions internally, externally. We worked with a steering committee that was built up of your staff. It included Larry and Nate and Bill and David Murphy and David Cottle. And we had a bunch of city staff that were involved in thinking about solutions and brainstorming ideas. And then we also met with individual stakeholders. So specifically the school, the new principal. We met with the old principal, too, and that changed while we were there. And we met with UTA and sat down with them to talk about stuff. We met with UDOT and talked to their active transportation leads and some of those stakeholders. And then we also held public meetings and did some online surveys that I'll show you here shortly. So to show you the options that everybody kind of came up with and we brainstormed, what we did was we drew cross-sections of the roads. This cartoon cross-section on the bottom is kind of what we did. This is an existing condition cross-section. And I just wanted to show it to you against an aerial that we took so you can see how the road, how it lays out. It's incredibly wide. I can't tell you, this road is wider than most UDOT roads. It's wider than you really should build. It's 130 feet from wall to wall. And then besides that, there's a 16-foot center turn lane, which again, wider than standard. All the travel lanes are 12 feet. You have a 12-foot shoulder on the south side and a 10-foot shoulder on the north side. Again, more than adequate for parking. You can see that, you know, the cars aren't taking up the whole lanes. And then we have, you know, sidewalks and some meandering grass. And so there's a lot to work with. Again, the city is blessed in this case because there's a lot of real estate to do some neat things within it. So the options that we came up with, all of them incorporate all of the goals. So they all accomplished adding active transportation. They all accomplished being a safer road. They all accomplished, you know, being more pedestrian-friendly. And we had a couple of different ideas. The first one was to add a buffered bike lane that's a curb separation. So there's a three-foot kind of raised concrete curb and then a bike lane behind it in both directions and keeping the five travel lanes, but reducing their lane width to 11 feet and then 13 foot for the center turn lane. Option two was very similar. It was, but it was to do buffered bike lanes on either side as opposed to a curb-separated bike lane. So this was just like what we have on 78 South where we've added those buffered bike lanes. In this particular case, both of these include wider sidewalks and a little bit more grass. The south side has a sidewalk right on the wall. And in the winter time, it'll fill up with snow and not melt because the sun can obstruct it. And so, you know, we looked at, is there an opportunity to put some snow storage between the sidewalk and the road? So we have some grass in there to accommodate some park strip to make it a little safer to walk. And on the north side, we have wider sidewalks in general to make those safer. Option three is the idea of a cycle track. And what that is, is you put both directions, northbound or eastbound and westbound bike lanes adjacent to each other, right? So it's a single 12-foot cycle track, like a shared-use path, like the Jordan River Trail. And then that is then separated from traffic with a raised median or a curb. And then you have both directions on the south side. The south side's important because that's the side the school's on, right? So if kids are biking to school, they want to be on that side of the road. And then on the north side, we just have the wider sidewalk. Option four and five both include parking. So, you know, we were challenged to look at parking and is there an opportunity to, again, we have this big white road that, you know, is overcapacity or has more capacity than we need. Is there an opportunity to look at parking? We did. And this just has angled parking and still accommodates five lanes. In this case, there are no bike lanes, but we have basically 10-foot shared-use paths on both sides or 10-foot sidewalks that accommodate biking. And the last option was to really think about the road differently. So and this is the option where we don't have five lanes, right? This is a three-lane option with angled parking just on the south side. Again, the side with the high school. And then the cycle track. And then more green space to make it feel like a parkway and still wider sidewalks. And we accommodate all of that by reducing the pavement. So those were kind of the main, really different options that we came up with. We presented those to the committee, we got insight. Again, we talked to the staff here, we went out to the public. We showed them to the high school students and we got feedback on all of them. In a similar fashion, we looked at Grizzly Way. Again, that piece, for the north-south piece kind of in front of the high school. Grizzly Way, same type of thing. In this case, we definitely wanted to accommodate parking. And one option has on-street parking, but we added buffered bike lanes on both sides. We do this by taking away the center turn lane throughout most of the corridor. It would still exist for the right turn pocket or the left turn pockets, like into the high school, but for most of it, we can reduce that and add the bike lanes. And then the second option, and we'll talk about this one in a little more detail, is to put angled parking on the west side by the high school and to put cycle track on the east side. Again, this accomplishes the goal of addressing active transportation. The other thing it does is it gets all the cars that were parked on the east side away so that those kids aren't running across the street and putting themselves in harm's way, right? So we take that option away and make it safer for the people who are parking on the corridor. So one of the things we did was we presented this in a public survey. We put it out there to folks. It was available last fall for people to take. We had 502 people take it. And I'm actually really enthused by that number and I'll show you why here in a second. But we asked people specifically like which options they liked. We also went to the high school and here we are standing. In fact, that's Bill over there and that's me right there. So we're out there standing at the high school, talking to folks. We had about 80 or so people we interacted with there. We also talked to the high school administration, like I said, and some of the stakeholders as well. I just wanted to highlight a couple of the takeaways from the survey. I think I have like maybe three of those slides. The first is, this survey went out on West Jordan's Facebook page, which has over 10,000 followers throughout the entire city of West Jordan. The very first question we asked was, how often do you travel on the road? And so people got to self-select themselves, right? So if they don't travel on this, if they live east of Bangor, they can just ignore the survey and move on with their life. But the people that did take the survey, 90% of them said that they drive on this road every week, right? So that's good because that means the 500 people that did take the survey are the people they actually care about. They know they're on the road every day. They, you know, they have a close connection to this part of the community. And so that was really important for the results. I wanted to show this to you. We asked a lot about how people would feel as a driver, as a cyclist, as a pedestrian. This was one of the questions, how comfortable would you be biking in each of these situations? And we presented photos of, you know, biking in a shoulder, biking in a straight bike lane, a buffered bike lane, a curb-separated bike lane and a cycle track. And you'll notice this fifth scenario, the number of people that felt comfortable and very comfortable was over half, right? And so you see that green kind of spike up when there's that buffer, that concrete separation from the cars that are traveling right next to you as a cyclist. And so that was, I think, played into a lot of the way people felt about what they wanted in terms of active transportation and specifically how the final corridor came out. So we asked people of all of those options, which ones they like and where? And so, you know, they might not all be applicable to the whole corridor. And so we broke the corridor into different segments and said, which ones do you like in the different segments? And overall, option number one, won. It had the most votes and people generally liked it. Again, it offered that curb separation for the bike lanes. It kept the five travel lanes, so it doesn't impact the road drivers that much. It makes it safer for bicycles and pedestrians, accommodates both, and it does so in the safest way. And that got the most votes. And the second most was the idea of just the buffered bike lanes. Again, offers that little bit of buffer from the corridor. And that was one kind of in every segment. Although the idea of a three-lane road got the most votes right in front of the high school with that angled parking. And then when we went out and talked to folks, specifically the people at the high school, that was overwhelmingly the majority of what they wanted, right? They really liked the idea because it increases the parking, which they recognize is not enough. And it slows people down. You know, having those narrower road would slow traffic and it accommodates cyclists on the side of the high school. And it got the most interest and votes of the people that came and talked to us personally, but didn't get the most in the online survey. We asked the same thing of Grizzly Way. Again, more people liked the idea of keeping parking on both sides with the bike lanes. However, although the piece that's south, that's in front of the high school, 26% of the people voted for this angled option with the cycle track, removing the parking on the east side. Again, once we talked to, that was the one, that option was favored by the school and largely the city staff, as well as the individuals we talked to that came to the public meeting. So we got overwhelming support for that particular option from the folks that were physically there, but slightly less online. So the final recommendations for our corridor were to include the first option kind of throughout, but we wanted to reserve the idea of that, of doing either or, that fifth option in front of the high school. So we have this kind of like dashed area right there. Again, the high school principal personally liked the idea of reimagining that corridor, having that angled parking for, you know, to accommodate more students, to do so in such a safe way that, you know, would slow traffic down, that would add the active transportation component and really kind of advocated for it. And then the same thing is true on Grizzly Way where the south piece, there was just so much vocal and personal support for that idea of doing the angled parking on the side of the school and eliminating the parallel parking on the east side. We spent a lot of time counting the parking spaces. With angled, you get more spaces. But by losing this stuff on the other side, it doesn't quite offset. You actually have fewer total spaces even with the angled parking. But if we get the angled in front of the high school on both roads, on Grizzly Way and New Bingham Highway, then it's more than is currently available just on Grizzly Way. So anyway, I'd be happy to answer questions about that. We tried doing an artist's rendering of what this might look like off one of our aerial photos. It's really hard to see, but there's angled parking here and angled parking here. There would also be some in front of the stadium. And then we'd have the bike lanes. And then the cycle track on this side would come to the intersection, a protected intersection, and that would transition into traditional bike lanes going north. Again, it's hard to see and it's kind of an artist's rendering. So we went a step further and we actually designed it. So we took, we had our active transportation design engineer do about a 30% design on what it would look like. The design we have in Google Earth, you can go download a version of it at the project website, which is still available. And it's just at tinyurl.com/newbingamhighway. So all the information that I presented today is up there, as well as the design you can look at, as well as the videos that I presented. And any questions you might have can potentially be entered there or you can always ask me. Finally, I want to mention two things. I know I've taken a lot of time here. One is, even after we did all that, we went out to the student body and we got special permission from the Jordan School District. By the way, it wasn't easy, I had to get signatures to do this. And we handed out paper surveys at homeroom on a specific date. And just tangentially, I'll tell you, this at the time, and I think it's still true, was the largest transportation survey ever conducted in the state of Utah for high school students. Anyway, we got like 2,000 high school students took this survey and they gave it, took the papers, gave it back to the homeroom teacher. And then we collected them a week later, they gave us huge box of the paper surveys. Anyway, one of the questions we had, and this is just a copy of what the survey looked like. One of the questions we asked was, if, you know, it would be convenient to bike or to walk or to carpool to school, right? By giving carpools preferential parking, would you be willing to do that? And 10% said they would be willing to bike if it was convenient. And 20% said they would be willing to walk. And 50% said they would be willing to carpool. I told a research colleague of mine this, that I was disappointed. I was like, oh, man, only 10% said that they'd walk, you know, bike to school if we build these cool bike lanes. And she was like, are you kidding me? You got 10%? That's a huge behavioral change. Like, don't you realize it's a gigantic number? And so she was incredibly pleased with the idea that 10% more. Again, out of over 2,000 students now, but the high school enrollment is projected to be 3,300 in five years. So that's a potential of 300 more students that would bike and almost 600 more that would walk. Again, if we had wider sidewalks that were safer, clearer, that type of thing. So, and a lot more people said they were willing to carpool. Finally, the last thing we looked at, at the city's request, well, the school's request really, was the idea of changing the name. So New Bingham Highway doesn't feel very conducive to the children that are walking on it every day, right? Crossing a highway to get to your middle school doesn't feel fun. And so the idea of a highway name and changing that name was, you know, suggested again by the school and the city staff as to look at this. It was the most controversial thing that we did because we put this ad in the paper to get support. We ended up doing two different surveys. The first survey asked for people's suggestions. And we got tons of suggestions. We had hundreds of responses, several inappropriate, but some kind of fun. And, but we got some really, really great ones, which I'll show you here in a second. And then we went out and we did a second survey. By the way, a lot of them complained about this. People thought it would cost a lot or why is the city doing this? So we looked at that too. So we looked at how many addresses are on the corridor and there's only 30 and none of them are residential. It's the high school and a couple of businesses by the railroad. We looked at the cost to replace all the signs. And it's just to buy the signs, but send the guy out there with the ladder and actually install it. And even that, that cost is under 10,000, it was about $9,000 bucks. And so impact, it wouldn't be that impactful. And by the way, that's a rarity. Think about changing the street name and being not impactful at all. Like, this is like a real opportunity for the city. Finally, this was the results of that survey. So more than 50% were in favor of a name change. So about 40% said, don't change it all, no name change. And then about 60% said, yeah, let's change it. And then of those names, these were the most popular and Copper Hills Parkway was the overwhelming winner. In fact, I talked to the principal personally and he thought it would be the coolest thing in the world to have his school located at the corner of Copper Hills Parkway and Grizzly Way. He thought that's the neatest thing. And by the way, this photograph, we photoshopped it in. So you can see, imagine what it would look like. There it is in the photograph, if we were to change the name. So that's it. I took a lot of time. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Anybody got questions? And I know some of us have been writing down stuff, so let's get to going. Commissioner Green.
So on the current traffic study, and you talk about the current level of service as an overall C.
Yep.
Is that daily average or did that include any peak times?
Yeah, so that is, that is a daily. So by the way, we looked at peak. You know, level of service on the corridor is funny because it's measured at an intersection level, not a segment of a corridor level. And the airport road signal hits level of service D and even occasionally level of service F because of the number of lefts, again, that were there trying to turn left and the volume that are coming right at that 5 to 5:15 kind of timeframe. And so, yeah, that might be a little bit of a misrepresentation when you look at the daily level of service, you know, across the whole day. But we did do individual intersection level of service and we did P and peak level of service and we had that in these counts. And actually, so we actually have a full report that covers everything. And it does look at the individual intersection level of service, which again, was not that bad. The one intersection was D, but the intersection of Grizzly Way almost didn't even hit D. We never got that much delay. People were able to flow through it, so.
I've got a question for you.
Sure.
So we obviously have determined parking is a premium. The school has no capacity left for parking. First of all, I'm completely opposed to any parking on whatever the name of that street's going to be. That's just off the table for me. But on Grizzly Way, why wouldn't we charge the students to park there? If we start charging them to park there, somebody's going to make more money on that. But more importantly, we're going to reduce the number of cars that are actually driving to school or we're going to actually incentivize more carpooling, which are both better options to me than trying to figure out how to park. By my math, 2,800 students in the school right now, that's almost 950 students that are sophomores that may or may not be driving. We've got 1,800 plus students that are driving. Why would we want more cars on the road no matter how we're parking them? I think we should be finding a way to get them off the road as much as possible. And if the students don't have anywhere to park, that's their problem. They can walk. I mean, most of them live within a walking distance, right? I know our capacity at that school, I know, and it's going to get bigger, but we've got to figure out a way to make this more safe. Anything that gets parking off the road is something I'm really in favor of.
Matt, you're absolutely right. And I got to tell you, you know, the parking on this side is concerning me just because I would, I went out there on several days in AM to watch the way students interacted and what they did. And so many of them had like close calls, just kind of running across or their classmates were driving in and not paying attention. And, 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 yeah, it seems to be a really big deal. At the same time, I talked to hundreds of students and I kept asking, you know, like, there was a senior who, like, whose house I could look at from the school and she drove every single day. And I was like, you know, why are you driving? And she said, well, you know, I gotta go to work after school. I'm like, well, what time is that? She's like, it was like 4:30. I'm like, well, just walk home and drive. And even then, she was like, well, I kind of just like having a car. I finally get to drive. Don't take it away from me. And I was like, geez. And so, by the way, I think there are ways to incentivize folks, whether it's with a stick by charging them for parking or with a carrot to, you know, get them to carpool more. And one way that can absolutely enhance it is by adding the infrastructure that, you know, people need to walk and bike, right? If we have, you know, cycling infrastructure, if we had wider sidewalks and accommodate those, I think you will see some behavioral change and there's opportunities to do more. So your idea for charging, you know, is not something that we looked at specifically, but, you know, it might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, I don't know how we do that, but if anything, at least taking that parking off the east side so we can eliminate the crossing of the road.
By the way, I asked a ton of people about parking because they charged the students like $20 for parking, like to get a permit, and none of them were paying it themselves. They're like, y'all, my parents pay. Because I kept thinking, what if we raised that to like $100, to $200, right? Really make them feel it? But to see if it would change behavior at all if there's an opportunity? And they were like, yeah, my parents pay. By the way, I also looked at what other schools were doing. Bingham had a reverse, they had an incentive program where if a student had a driver's license and opted to not get a parking permit, they would give them $20 cash. Think about handing a 16-year-old straight up money. But the school was willing to do it if they would choose to not get a permit and then not park. They had to walk to school every day. Do you know how many, they started this program for the first time last year? Guess how many students at the high school signed up? Zero, exactly zero students even. I took that option. And I was like, oh, what are you going to do? So I don't know what the solution is, but, I mean, you've got some good ideas.
$20 a long time ago would have been a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money now. All we're doing is giving them lunch for two days.
Yeah.
But any other questions for our Commissioner Badong?
You're exploring segregated bike lanes. I like those ideas generally downtown. They really cause a problem with ingress and egress to business, but we don't have that issue here. I understand spring and summer and fall, they're just fine. What do we do with the snow on these lanes?
Yeah, so Salt Lake City has several of these. They're on Third South, they're on Second West. And, you know, they have two different machines. They're like little, they're like cat, caterpillar type of things. One's got a brush on it, one's got a plow or blade on it. And they use those to do all of their bike lanes around the city, as well as like trails and stuff like that. So that's what we would need in order to clean those up. And it is important that they, that they stay clear, right? That we have, so that's for this. So we've got like an eight-foot lane here kind of between two curbs. And so, yeah, you would need, and honestly, you know, the Parks Department might have something like that where we can just kind of outfit it with a brush or a blade and kind of it. But that's typically how it does. The Salt Lake City, again, they have the most of them and I've talked to their Public Works guys and that's what they do. They just have to send them out every winter.
From a staff perspective, we're okay on adding additional shoveling on those days? You're speaking for the Public Works Department there. I just want you to make sure you're going on record with this.
As long as it doesn't involve Larry Gardner, do whatever you want.
Any additional questions for our consultant? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
We have an action on this, don't we? Anybody want to?
Remember that any action on this, when you're making the final decision, it's not a recommendation to the planning, to the city council.
Correct, thank you. Commissioner Green.
Sorry, my computer's slower than if somebody else wants to make it.
All right, I'll go for it. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve this study. That changes a lot of the words in there. Commissioner England.
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion seconded by Commissioner England. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Excellent, thank you. Next item, first public hearing for the night. The SVWRF Communications Tower, 7495 South, 1300 West, conditionally used permit for a 70-foot communications tower in a PF zone. Is the applicant here?
I'm here.
Oh, good, then I'll have to say your name. Come on forward. Mr. Worthing, I can go that, I can do that. Just tell us your name and address for the record, please.
Tagan couldn't make it. I'm Jared Aldroid with JWO Engineering representing.
The floor is yours. Go ahead.
Okay, the facility has asked us to help them look at a communications tower. It would be, as shown on the site here, right next to one of their existing buildings where their existing antenna is mounted on the roof of that building. And they wanted to look at this to enable better communication with their metering stations, with their employees as they're out around the service area and just improve their ability to get data to and from all of their equipment and people.
Is that all?
Yes, the details on the site and everything were in the packet.
You're not required to make up for the time that we went on the last item.
We'll keep it short unless there are questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Green.
I'll just ask, because we talked about it in the pre-meeting. Due to the height of this tower, we are correct in assuming it does not need a light on the top of it, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, it's below all of the required lighting for the airport.
Any other questions? Okay, we will save you some time to reply to any comments from the public hearing. Mr. Forsyth.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So as shown on the zoning map here, you can see this tower is going to be located in a PF zone, which is the city's public facilities zone. So this zone includes pretty much the entire South Valley Water Reclamation Facility site, which is a total of 58 acres in size. So going back to the aerial, you can kind of see here, to the east, you've got the tracks line and just right next to that is the regional power transmission lines that run through there. To the west, you've got the North Jordan Canal and just on the other side of that is a residential area, just kind of in the northeast corner. So, and then on the north and south ends of the property, that's all vacant land, which is owned by South Valley Water for future possible expansions. So the towers, as you can see here, is pretty centrally located. The nearest residential structure is going to be 400 feet away, is what we measured. So, which is typically are about three times the distance we normally have for cell towers and similar structures. So just to give a little bit of clarification on the ordinance for this thing. So most of our cell towers in the city are governed under the low-power communications section of the code, which is Title 13, Chapter 16. And that section actually prohibits lattice towers. But there's an additional section of the code, which is Title 13, Chapter 15, which covers public facilities. So that chapter actually allows for communication towers with the conditional use permit, but doesn't have the more strict standards that you would see in the low-power tower section. So the, as Commissioner Green pointed out, the tower will be 70 feet in height, which is actually shorter than most of the cell towers in the city. Most cell towers range from either 80 feet or 100 feet, depending on when they were approved. So we feel that's an appropriate height, shouldn't be any taller than the existing transmission tower that, for the power lines that are already there. So, so based on these findings and those in the staff report, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit.
Any questions for staff? Okay, we'll save our, oh, Commissioner Green.
So I'm just curious, and in the conditions of approval, paragraph six, we call it a conditional use permit, but it's really just a conditional use. And so what we're, so I'm just looking at the conditions of approval. What we're trying to say in six is that the conditional use approval, before it drops, they have to start building within the 12 months from when we approve it. Otherwise, the approval dies on the vine.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right.
And Mark prepared another slide that actually shows what the tower would look like. And you can see it's right on the east side of one of the buildings and it'll project approximately 30 feet above the building, which is much, much shorter than the transmission lines next to the Jordan River, which are probably 150, 175 feet tall, so.
Just, just for my clarification, on this, let me see if I can use this pointer here. So I'm looking at this right here and we've got like a little five feet right here and then it's 70 feet from here. To me, that adds up to 75. Here's on the, on the right side here, you've got the total height of the building going from top to bottom. But over here, we got this little five-foot space. Can you just explain that really quick to make sure that we're actually at 70 and not 75 on this? Come on up. Into the microphone for me.
Worst-case base structure, there has to be a structural base at the bottom of that. Five foot is the worst case of that. It likely will be only a foot or two above grade when that's finally constructed. We showed it this way so that you would have the numbers with the worst-case tallest scenario.
So worst case is we could actually be at 75 feet?
Well, it's, the worst case is the 32.67-foot projection above the top of the building.
Okay, that's fine, but we're talking about a 70-foot tower, right? And we're seeing a potential five-foot base. Are we 70 feet with the base or 75 feet with the base at worst case? I'm just trying to understand.
Worst case is 75 feet with the base.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure we understand what we're discussing up here.
70-foot tower.
And 75 feet still is under? Because I thought we talked about 75 feet in the pre-meeting being the limit.
Geography around it. Yeah, the reason this is important is one of the conditions. Condition number three states the total height of the communication tower shall not exceed 70 feet. I don't have an issue with the 75. We will just need to amend this condition.
Just making sure we have clarification on what we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's do this. Let's do the public hearing and then we can bring this back. We'll go and open the public hearing. This is your chance to come up and share your thoughts on this. We've got two people who have already signed up to speak on this item. First is Becky Smith, followed by Michelle Foot. After that, if you are here and want to chat about this, please come on forward in that order. Becky, you're up first.
I know that this is going to get built. I understand that. My home is on Fox Den Drive. It is the road, it is the one that backs, it's in that white area that backs the canal. So we look out into the sewer treatment plant. I understand it's there. When we bought it, we knew it was going to be there. We did not know a tower was going in. My biggest concern is the construction period. And I would hope that perhaps we could put some condition on the actual hours of the construction period. I say this because this summer, there was maintenance that happened during the South Valley Water Reclamation. Throughout the maintenance, the noise levels outside were unbearable. We could not go outside this summer. We reported this to the city, to the Salt Lake Health Department, who takes care of noise levels and we talked directly with South Valley. The screeching and extreme loudness made it so that we couldn't go outside. They didn't seem to believe our complaints until they actually drove into our neighborhood because that neighborhood, the neighborhood that is northwest of the construction actually goes up on a hill. The noises bounce off and echo throughout the neighborhood. So what they're hearing down below is not the same as what we hear up actually in the neighborhood. That is our biggest concern. Once they did go up and heard the sound that they were actually making, they did apologize to us and tried to make some adjustments, which actually did help. So my fear that is that as this construction starts again, again, we're going to lose at least another year of not being able to go outside our home. We're going to lose that time. The trucks will use the access road that runs behind our home. We hear them, they are loud today itself. We had multiple trucks going up and down that road. I don't know what the construction, no one could answer it when I called. And again, it was loud, but no one could give us an answer. I would hope that a condition on approval could include, to meet criteria two, that talks about the health and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood. I would hope that a construction, or a condition on approval would include that construction would occur only between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00 PM and construction would only occur Monday through Friday, so that at least our weekends would be quiet. And so that before the hours of 9:00 AM, often this summer, the construction started as early as 7:00 or 7:30. These are the things that we were dealing with and we don't want to deal with that again. I, again, I know that this project is going to go through. I just hope that conditions can be put that makes it more acceptable to the residents to deal with the noise of the construction. Thanks.
Thank you. Michelle.
I'm Michelle Foot and I agree with what Becky said. I live in that same neighborhood. I'm about three blocks away from the facility. And even at my home, three blocks away, we could hear the noise of the maintenance this summer. And it wasn't quite unbearable at my home, but it was definitely annoying, irritating to pets and children and made it difficult. So I'm not opposed to the tower. I don't necessarily love the idea. I think it's probably going to be an eyesore, but we can deal with it. I would just hope that they're considerate and that some conditions are placed so that the noise level of the construction isn't quite the inconvenience that it was this summer.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you want to come back up really quick and let's hear what your thoughts are on their proposals for hours of work?
For this project, it's a fairly minor project. I don't think that the facility would have any issues with including that in our specifications for the project to be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It will be a fairly short construction period. And again, it's kind of behind that building, so it's shielded from the neighborhood. I don't think there will be noise issues. It's a much different type of construction than the maintenance that the facility had over the summer.
What, when do you guys expect to start the construction phase? And how long will that go following this pattern that they suggested?
I do not know their intended start dates on that. They are still in the process of finalizing the tower selection and getting the design finalized.
Do you know how long the construction period is once you get started?
Again, once the equipment arrives, the base will probably take a couple weeks, a couple days to build and then once it's cured, the concrete, the tower will probably go up in a matter of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, no, I think you're good. Thank you. There's no issue with this as an additional condition, right? Since he seems that they're amenable to that?
Yeah, you quite often see when there's potential noise levels, and obviously with construction, there are, you do see those hour limitations. This nine to five would be a little bit more stringent than you typically see. But if the applicant is agreeable to those conditions, then it would be appropriate, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Green?
So, obviously, we need to change a couple of conditions of approval. Do we want to add them now and then just vote on them? Is that the easiest? So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to move to amend the conditions of approval. Condition number three, change seventy to seventy-five feet. Condition number six, change the word "permit" to "approval", just to make it more consistent with the law. And number seven, condition number seven, is that the hours of construction will be from nine A.M. to five P.M., Monday through Friday.
If you could just add "for" this communication tower to the end of that.
For this communications tower. Thank you. That's a good idea. So, that's the motion.
Commissioner, are you making the motion?
I'm making the motion to amend it.
Okay.
Just so that we had it clear, and then we know what we're voting on.
Okay, so, second on this?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Commissioner England, okay. We have a motion to amend the current application and the conditions of use. Any discussion to that motion? All right, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, now we have our new conditions. We can go ahead and vote on that. Anybody want to do that?
Here, I'll do it.
Commissioner Green?
Since the microphone's on. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, upon the evidence, explanation, and amendments, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for the SVWRF communication tower, located at seventy-four ninety-five South, thirteen-hundred West, in a PF zone with the conditions of approval listed, with the condition as approval as amended.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Any discussion to this motion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? All right, we are unanimous on that. Moving right along. The station at Gardner Mill Executive Suites, twelve-eight-six West, seventy-eight-eight-hundred South, for conditional use permit for a hotel in a PC zone. The station at Gardner Mill LLC in Joe Colosimo. You are our applicant. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Joe Colosimo, one-one-seven-nine-five South, Taitlin Rose Lane, Draper, Utah. So, we have just completed our twenty-eighth month of construction. We have received a C.O. on the fourth building as of today and have two buildings to go. Probably another six to eight months of construction. Needless to say, we're probably going to be eight months overrun just because of the economy and trades and trying to get people there. So, it's crazy out there. So, we're a little bit over the time on our completion timeframe. Through the course of construction, we have been advertising the bottom floors of Building One and Building Two to... Let's see, how does this work? Okay, Building Two and Building One. We have commercial space in those buildings, and we've been advertising to commercial tenants. Currently, we have a commercial tenant that's going to occupy the south end of Building Two. And we've submitted for a building permit and have redlines back. And that's going to be the Badass Coffee Company. They're going to put in their franchise training store there, so they weren't as hung up on a drive-through. They have a franchisee that's going to own it, but they're going to bring other franchisees in to train them there. And so, they'll start construction probably around the fifteenth of December. We do have a waxing studio that will take a space just north of them in that same building. On the building number one, on the south end, we have a restaurant called El Mexicenze. They are going to take about thirty-five-hundred square feet on this end cap here. And we also have a permit in process, and we'll start construction on that on December fifteenth. El Mexicenze has a new location over by Shields. They took the Free Bird location there. The guy does a great job. He's pretty successful, and it's really kind of a fast service. So, it's a display kitchen. You go in, you get your food as you go, kind of like all Chipotle and all the other places. And so, we're quite excited about those two tenants. Through the course of trying to rent it for commercial space, we got a lot of pushback for the fact that all this stuff that's deep into the building has no visibility on seventy-eight-hundred South. And we just couldn't get a lot of commercial tenants that wanted to be deep into the project without commercial visibility from the south. And so, consequently, we rented the stuff that was easy to rent because of visibility and traffic flow. And so, we've pulled the trigger on those commercial spaces. Through the course of this, we've had a lot of inquiries into the other part of our project about nightly rentals, executive suites, people that could come and stay. I've sold my house. I need a place for a week or two. You know, I want to come in. I don't want to stay at a hotel. I want to cook my own food. I want to stay and go work at Danan for a week and come back to a facility. And so, we approached Larry about the idea of turning the balance of the bottom space into nightly rental executive suites, kind of a boutique hotel type of thing. And so, I'm here tonight to present that idea to you. The other pushback that we had on the commercial space was parking. People didn't feel like there was adequate parking to accommodate that much commercial space. Currently, we have ten extra stalls in the bottom of Building One that we could accommodate this kind of a use. So, the eight units in Building One, those people that rent those spaces on a nightly basis or a weekly basis would then have access underneath to the garage, control the atmosphere. And so, we have plenty of parking there. On Building Two, we would isolate parking back here in this corner for those potential tenants. Our access, our proposed access to the nightly rental would be at this corner, and we could designate this parking there for the ten units in Building Two. And so, we feel like we have more parking to accommodate this use than we would the thirty thousand square feet of commercial. And so, that's the other thing, I think, that's pushing the commercial tenants away for the fact, visibility and adequate parking. And so, we've had a lot of inquiries into this use. And so, we thought we would come and ask for a conditional use to see if we could convert that balance of the space to nightly rentals, you know, a minimum of twenty-four hours and up to, you know, a week or whatever that people would need, so.
Ted, any questions for the applicant? All right, we'll save you some time. Mr. Forsyth?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So, going over the zoning real quick. So, this is located in a PC zone with a T S O D overlay. So, this is kind of the mixed-use, high-walkability area of the city that's located within a quarter mile of a track station. So, with this use being a hotel, we feel that combined with, like you said, the restaurants and the waxing studios, we feel that's a good mix of use, an appropriate mix of use, and should be a good fit for that area. So, some of the surroundings, you've got the Maverick Gas Station just to the west there. And then, to the east is the Gardner Village retail area. And to the north, it's hard to see on the map, but that's more of a coming-soon senior living community that'll be going in there shortly. So, with those surrounding uses, mostly commercial and the higher-density residential, again, we feel that a hotel would just be a good fit there. So, the original development plan did call for the ground-floor space to be reserved for a commercial use. And with this being a hotel, I don't think that'll change. As far as impact goes, hotels are pretty innocuous. We don't really anticipate any noise or odors or dust or anything like that. As far as the changes to the building itself, there's really not going to be a whole lot of changes to the exterior, if any. Most of that remodeling will take place on the interior. So, the applicant will just need to work with our building and safety department to make sure that those changes are up to code and that they're compliant with their requirements. Other than that, we feel that there's enough parking to accommodate a hotel with only eighteen units. So, parking impact should be very minimal. Traffic should be minimal. And then, we've got the track station to the south, which should help to kind of alleviate any of those concerns, so.
So, based on those findings, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the station at Gardner Mill Executive Suites.
Thank you. I got a quick question before I let these guys chime in if they want to. How much square footage do we have on the bottom of these two buildings combined? I think he said thirty thousand? And we're taking up about, what, nine or ten thousand of it with existing applications? That's not about right?
Yeah, so it's about six percent of the entire development.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. So, Joe, do you want to come back up really quick? Let's just get it from you.
So, the three commercial uses are going to be right around fifty-five-hundred to six thousand square feet. We do have, for the hotel, we do have a fitness room to provide to the hotel users. And then, we do have in one corner of the building, Building Two, we do have a mail room for the entire project. And so, there's thirty thousand feet. I think six thousand of it is commercial. So, there's twenty-four thousand feet that would equate over to the eighteen, you know, the eighteen units roughly.
Okay. Is that fitness room going to be open to the entire development or just to the hotel?
No, that fitness room will be just to the hotel users. We have a fitness room in our clubhouse that will accommodate the other renters. So, this will just be dedicated to the hotel users that want to get a workout in the morning. It'll be just for them solely.
Okay.
And then, they will, the hotel users then will have access to our pool in the middle of the project. So, if they want to go sit by the pool while they're waiting, they can go sit by the pool, but they'll have their own dedicated weight room.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Forsyth, one more question for you. If and/or when the commercial projects that are going in, the three or four units, fail, are we going to allow this to be converted into additional rooms? Is this going to have to come back for another conditional use permit approval process? What's the next step on that?
Yeah, so if they do decide to convert those hotel suites to full-time apartments, permanent apartments, that will actually increase the density of the development, and they will need to...
Let me clarify. We're not talking about additional apartments because that's already been decided with the previous approval process. I'm talking about additional extended-stay hotel rooms, right? We're not talking about additional apartments here.
Yeah, so if they want to convert more apartment space to hotel space, for instance, that would be an expansion of the conditional use permit. So, they would need to come back and amend that.
That's what I wanted to make sure of. Commissioner Thomas, I saw you chime in. Did you have a question, or did I beat you to it?
No, actually, yeah.
Oh, you hit your button real quick. Go ahead.
Question for the applicant. On the separation of the hotel units compared to the rest of the apartments, how is that separated? In other words, is there a separation of those?
In the structure itself?
Correct.
Yeah, so, you know...
I saw the stairwells in there.
So, the top floor of the commercial is a four-inch concrete pad. So, there's that fire break there. And so, that's the separation between the commercial space and the hotel space.
I'm talking about access.
Oh, access. So, yeah, we have a separate access for the hotel space in the front of Building One. So, we have an access right here in front of Building One, just to the north of the Mexican Restaurant. And we'll have an access here on the west side of Building Two that they'll have access to the hotel space.
And that doesn't interfere with the apartments?
Well, the one in Building Two is somewhat combined because the elevator is in that access. So, Building Two is combined. Building One is separate from the... Building One, the tenants access Building One from the east through the garage and the two stair towers that go all the way to the garage. There's an elevator that goes. And then, Building Two, they'd have a common access.
The stair towers would be egress for emergency for both the apartments and for the hotels.
So, in Building Two, we'll set a door back separating the hotel to a separate key fob so that the tenants can't, so that the hotel tenants get in into their space, and the renters get into their space with separate key fobs.
Commissioner Green? Or you want to save your thoughts?
I can't remember...
You keep smiling over here like you've got something to think.
That one, I had a comment. I was going to ask you when you're going to put a sausage store in there, but never mind. But I can't remember what I was going to ask.
Okay.
So, I will wait and remember.
Write it down. Next time, you think about it, and we'll get back to you, Commissioner, but don't.
I'm concerned about a usage creep for lack of a better term. We've talked about apartments. We've talked about executive suites. We've talked about a hotel. Are those three terms interchangeable? Do they all mean the same thing? The concern is, is the growth of this rather than a short stay. It could be something longer.
In my mind, those three things are synonymous. So, they're all the same use.
Commissioner Green?
I remember my question now. So, I just want to clarify. If we do a conditional use for eighteen apartments, or, sorry, eighteen hotel rooms, then if the hotel rooms are, we added additional hotel rooms in the future, then we would have to come back for an additional conditional use.
Yes, that's correct.
So, we don't, if we're, when we're dealing with the action later on, if we decide to approve this, do we have to add a... Do we have to specifically say that is for eighteen? Eighteen ho... Okay. That's the question. I just want to be able to make sure that when we get where we need to be, we know what we're doing.
Okay. Any other pressing questions for staff and/or applicant? Right now, we've gone way out of order on this. No, we've all done it. So, we're going to go ahead and do the, open this up to the public, and then, we'll bring it back to the planning commission after and see if we need to go somewhere else. So, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing section. This, again, I've got an order for the first four. Beyond that, then it'll be open. So, we'll start again with Becky, followed by Michelle. And you've got two of them here, so just three. And then, Jalen. In that order. After that, then you can jump up however you want to.
All right. I thought there was going to be a different order, but this will work. I think the applicant just addressed one of our concerns, that apartments, hotels, and extended-stay are synonymous. To us, they're not. To us, it was already addressed, the apartment portion and the commercial portion. He said they're synonymous? Then why is this mixed-use? That does not address the mixed-use criteria if they are synonymous. We are adding more apartments to an area that was already set as apartment, with what the apartments were to be. How is that one, if they are going to be monitored on the length of stay, how is that going to be monitored? If this is developed into executive suites or extended-stay, which to me is not an executive suite, has this already been purchased? Or is the developer, the applicant, developing this himself? And then, is he going to come in six months and say, oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't sell these, but hey, they're already billed as apartments, so let's just make them residential? To me, it becomes a safety issue, not just for us in the neighborhood, but for those already living there and preparing to live there. Extended-stay are known as high-crime rates. Turn on your TV, call Sandy and call Midvale Police Departments, who have extended stays in their city... Midvale Police Departments, who have extended stays in their, in their city limits. Many mu, or a lot of the crime is happening in those facilities. Do we really want to bring that into this corner of West Jordan, right by Gardner Village, which is supposed to be a big showcase for us in West Jordan? Do we really want our neighbors, our new neighbors, to be introduced to West Jordan with the high crime rates that are brought on by the safety issues that are often presented in the short term, or in his words, more apartments? This is something that we need to look out for our neighbors, to let them understand, because they are not all there. We are here to speak on their behalf. This is something we've addressed throughout the years that this has come before the planning commission and the council. This is not a first-time proposal. Let's look back at the many years that we've also fought through and tried to come up with agreement between the residents and the applicant. And yet here we are already sidestepping that agreement. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I know that there's a public hearing, but in light of it may influence some of the, that public comment, the city does not consider apartments and hotels as synonymous, regardless of what the applicant said or did not say.
Not right now.
I just wanted to make that clear, that there's a clear distinction between the two. And that's why we're holding this hearing tonight.
And I plan to bring that back up. That was why I pinned Mr. Forrest that down on it, but I wanted to make that clear. So I'm glad you said that. But feel free to share your thoughts, and we'll go ahead and address that again as we bring that back to the planning commission.
Okay, I'm really frustrated to even have to be here. I spent several years going to every single city council meeting where the Gardner Station was discussed. I was on a committee of citizens that worked directly with council members and the Colosmos, in which there were negotiations back and forth so that they could gain our support for this project. One of the concessions was that they would provide commercial. And that commercial was defined as boutiques, shops, places to eat, places you can take your family and hang out. We don't hang out in extended stays. It's three or four blocks away from our home. That is not what they promised us when they got us to agree. We stood up in support of their final plans, told the city council we were finally happy with their planned community, and now they are changing it and getting exactly what they wanted in the first place, more apartments. Now, there might be a difference between an extended stay and an apartment, but not if you stay there six or seven months. One of the things they told us that they would do to keep their apartment safe was vet their tenants. How are they going to vet their tenants at their hotel? They're not. They're going to get whatever walk-of-the-mill person that wants to stay there gets to stay there. These were promises that they made to us over two years ago, over the course of many months of negotiation. As far as the staff report, I looked at that. The criteria that I dispute is, criteria one, consistent with the original intent. This is not consistent with their original intent. Well, it might be consistent with their original intent, but not the plan that they actually proposed to the city council that we agreed to support. Criteria two, will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general wherewithal of the persons residing in the neighborhood. Oh my goodness. We all know that the extended stays are not the most safe environment, yet they're going to have tenants living right above them. I know people that live in their new apartments. They're not, that is not a safe environment. I don't think it's a safe environment. And then in our community, it bleeds into us too because we're neighbors nearby too. Jaylen's going to address some other safety concerns, so I will leave that to her. I'm just really frustrated that we even have to be there doing it all over again. And I want to know, how long is it going to take before they ask us to, they ask you to turn those hotel rooms into apartments? And then instead of four hundred something apartments, they're going to have another eighteen, which, you know, doesn't seem like a lot, but they promised us retail, and we're not getting it.
Thank you. Jaylen.
Like she said, this particular use was not the intent of this planned community, which was originally approved and was in collaboration with the city, with the residents, and with this developer. This transit-oriented residential complex was intended to be largely self-sustaining with small retail shops providing everyday shopping and services for the residents. Extended stay hotels can be a haven for crime. All arguments that they are high-end or will be used by professionals or families waiting to move into a home does not equate to safety or no criminal activity. By word of mouth, one bad actor tells the other, this is a place where you can come, set up shop, and be unencumbered. By being tucked in the middle of a residential community with children, this can take the law enforcement focus off of them. Based on the training from the Utah Attorney General's Office Internet Crimes Against Children in May of 2018, sex offenders are more likely to have a higher degree of formal education and have training duties, responsibilities, with job titles of managers or professionals. What type of security will be added for the families of the apartment complex by approving these hotel rooms? If the Colosmos are participating in the Good Landlord Program for their long-term apartment renters, background checks are required. If the background checks are required on long-term renters, then they most certainly should be required for short-term renters. Long-term renters should be afforded the same safety precautions, no matter who their neighbors are. As a volunteer crime victim advocate, my last drug overdose victim death was at an extended stay facility. This is not uncommon if you are connected to public safety. Don't be fooled by the scary stereotypes of drug dealers or any other criminals and what they can and cannot afford to pay. Would you want these potential crime and safety concerns below your feet where you and your kids live? No hotel, motel, or extended stay should be in the same building with families. And professionals can be criminals too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last chance. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring us back to the planning commission.
Do you want-
Yeah. Joe, do you want to come back up and address the concerns raised by the citizens, please? Make sure to address them towards us.
I apologize. I thought you said, what's the difference between hotels and extended stays? That's what I meant, was synonymous. Apartments, apartments over there, we're going to rent for long-term. We're going to lease them for twelve months. They've got their own water and gas meters. They signed a twelve-month lease. These apartments will be furnished. They won't have to pay water and sewer and all those things. They'll be rented at a shorter interval times. The way that we'll secure our current tenants from our short-term tenants are through the building security. Each building is secured with its own key lock. You have to have a key fob to get into those buildings. And so hotel users won't have the same key fob that a person in Building Six has. The guys in Building Six don't have a key fob that gets them into Building Three. And so that's how we plan to segregate the short-term stay people from the long-term stay people, if that makes sense. And so like I was saying, in the one building where they have a common entrance, the long-term tenants will go up a set of steps. They'll have a key fob to get into. The short-term tenants will go through a door that they'll have a separate key fob to. So that's how we'll secure and separate the two type of users. And I'm sorry for trying to combine them together. I meant executive suites and hotel are synonymous, not with the apartments.
Any other questions while he's up there? Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Chair. As far as management of the hotel and the apartment space, is that something you're doing personally? Are you hiring a management company to run the hotel and a management company to run your apartments?
So currently, we have a management company that runs our apartments. They have an arm that does this kind of a use. And so as a seamless thing, we'll probably use them to do both because they do our apartments. And it's always good to have some synergy there. So-
And as far as if there is an issue with either a tenant in your apartment or your hotel, I'm assuming there's an eviction process that they can-
Sure, sure.
So if you have a tenant that's in the apartment building and they're not complying with their lease, you can't evict them?
Can evict them, yes.
And you can also evict if there's someone in your hotel that is not complying, or extended stay that's not complying, you can evict them?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious, before you sit down, I should have asked this when you were up the first time. What efforts were made by your company to find maybe some kind of professional office space that could go back there versus retail? I understand that the retail, probably not viable that deep off of Seventy Hundred South, nobody wants to go there, right? I get that. The alternative of leaving them completely empty, also not viable for you as a developer, right? But it's kind of a nod to the residents who fought hard to get what they wanted out of this. What efforts were made by you and your company to find professional office to go in here as opposed to putting in extended stay hotel rooms?
Just the normal marketing channels, hiring an agent to put it out there, feelers, flyers, you know, signs on the building for lease, filled-in phone calls, just the typical marketing that you would do for, to pre-lease something, you know?
But specifically as office space or just simply as retail?
Well, just across the board. We were accepting any kind of a tenant, you know, that could fill the space, that we thought was acceptable. So it was a broad, a broad marketing campaign to try to cover all the bases, to see if we could get the State Farm guy or the, you know, those kind of tenants. And just didn't get, it was just too far off the street. They didn't get any takers per se.
Okay. Any other questions while he's up there? All right. We'll go ahead and bring this back to discussion from the planning commission. Commissioner Green.
Yeah, I'll start. I do understand all your concerns. I worked on that same committee with Michelle, so I understand that. I think there's a couple, I think there's, but I do understand the concerns. So there are a couple of things that I want to look at with conditions of approval. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna talk about them out loud. And then if, after we talk about them, everybody else has a chance, we can, we can talk about amending these conditions of approval. The one thing that, the first thing that I would like to change is condition of approval for, it says that each hotel booking shall be a minimum of twenty-four hours in duration. The staff report talks about maximum of thirty days. I would like to include the maximum of thirty days in there. That keeps it in the state definition of temporary lodging under the, under the state tax code and everything else. And it keeps it as a temporary lodging, and it can't be used as long-term. So that's one thing that I'd like to look at. Number five, I'd like to make sure that we say manned reception desk is twenty-four hours a day. Number nine, I would like to add that it says that the condition is comply with all statute, ordinance, regulations, including Salt Lake County Health Regulation Number Four. So for the residents to understand, Salt Lake County Health Regulation Number Four is actually the Health Department regulation that regulates lodging and public lodging, and this would fall under that. The nice thing about what the county has done with lodging, and they'll have to enforce that anyway, I just want, I will put it as a conditional use, or part of the condition is that, that there has to be linen changed out, there has to be towels, everything that's the typical hotel that gets the housing staff, whatever you want to call it, that, I don't want to use the word maid because that's sexist, but that's what we always-
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping, thank you. It'll get the housekeeping going in there at least a couple, at least three or four times a week to ensure the stuff that we're talking about. And then last but not least, number ten, I want to make sure we add a condition of approval that it, that the units are limited to eighteen, and anything more than that's got to require a new conditional approval. Just as a comment, I've stayed in, I've stayed in some pretty high-end extended stays, or executive, let me rephrase that. I've stayed in some pretty high-end executive suites. And I've never seen a two-bedroom that big, but I stayed in one that was a one-bedroom that was super big and had a full kitchen and everything else. Not sure I ever saw one with a washer and dryer, but that's a different story. Just as a comment to Mr. Colosimo, as you look at the design of this and you look at complying with the public housing, you're probably going to have to change a little bit of your design because I think they're actually going to require you to have some water storage on site and a couple other things. And so your design may change, and you may end up making a couple more smaller units instead of the larger ones. But that's, that'll be, you'll have to work that out with the county because they'll have, they'll have you do a plan, and you have to submit your designs to them anyway. So that'll have to be approved. So with that, if anybody else wants to talk about those, those are my proposed amendments to the conditional use, and I'll shut up for a minute.
I actually have a question for you. On the thirty-day max, are you proposing that the lease can't be renewed after that thirty days is reached? And is there a period of time before they can?
So what I'm saying is, is that under state statute, there is temporary use lodging. And I'm going to sound, I'm going to sound cynical, a little bit cynical here. So this is why I want to use the term temporary, temporary lodging under Utah statute. First off, anything that's temporary lodging, we get the extra sales tax. I see Joe's head nod. We get extra sales tax if it's temporary. So as long as, so if it's thirty days or less, then it stays temporary lodging. I think that alleviates some of the citizens, but it also generates a few bucks. But it makes it consistent with what a hotel would be.
Correct. But my question is, at the end of the thirty days, can I walk out, check out, and then check right back in? Is that permitted in this scenario? That's what I'm asking.
I would imagine it probably is. Unfortunately, it probably is.
Just curious, I've never stayed in one, so I don't know the rules.
It would be the same thing as checking in and out of a hotel. And, you know, I've never, oh, never mind, I won't make the comment about checking in and out of Marius to get a free night.
Any, any other comments or questions? Any issues with the amended changes that he's requested? Commissioner Hatch.
This is completely unrelated, well, not really, but from Commissioner Green, I've stayed in extended stays as well as I've relocated. And everyone I've stayed in, I've never had an issue. And I really think West Jordan, our climate is such that I would hope that we would bring reputable, there will, there will be some process that they can go by and, you know, maintain and contain who is staying in that extended stay. And I guess I hope for the greater good, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
This is all yours.
So we've got ten conditions of approval. Right, we've added nine and ten, and we've amended-
Amended four and five.
Number four and five.
Do you want me to make the motion with all that in it?
Why don't we just do the motion?
Really quick. Mr. Murray.
Yeah, so just for the record, I think you're on the right track as far as considering everything you should. I just wanted to put on the record some of the applicable laws. First, generally, Utah Code Section 10-98-104 says that a city may establish standards and impose requirements which are not prohibited by state law. Nothing appears to be prohibited by state law. In fact, as described by Commissioner Green, we're actually using state law as kind of a standard with the hotels and the thirty-day limit is, especially where the transient room tax is applicable, appears to be state law anyway. And then also, 10-98-509 says that a applicant is entitled to action on a application if, and you cannot deny it if it meets all the criteria of the ordinance. It doesn't, does not appear that there's been any statements that came up during the public hearings which would be the basis for denial. Then Section 10-98-507, which was mentioned during the pre-meeting, the conditional use statute says that you can reasonably mitigate any anticipated detrimental effects. And I think you've gone through that analysis as well. So the changes, I think, are all appropriate, that you're looking at in the conditions. You always want to acknowledge other jurisdictions that have other entities that have jurisdiction over the subject matter. Obviously, Salt Lake County Health Department has jurisdiction. And I think it is good to acknowledge that it is just the eighteen units. So I just wanted to let you know those different code sections.
Thank you. For my part, I think we're on the right track here. I mean, I feel like the residents that this is a complete bait and switch. However, it is permitted, and we're doing- and we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, but I think by adding these conditions, we're getting the best product out of this, so I think we're on the right track. Commissioner Green?
With that being said, based on the information findings and public hearings tonight, uh, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for the station at Gardner Mill Executive Suites located twelve eighty-six west seventy-eight hundred south in a PC zone, TSOD overlay district with the conditions of approval listed on page two of the report with the following, with the following additions. Condition four includes, uh, it, it, it would read hotel booking shall be for a minimum of twenty-four hours in duration and a maximum of thirty days to maintain temporary lodging status. Number five would add the word twenty-four hour a day manned reception desk. Number nine would be added that says that the, uh, operator will comply with all sta- statutes, ordinances and regulations, including Salt Lake County Health Regulation number four regarding public lodging. And condition number ten is that it's limited to eighteen. It's limited to eighteen units.
We have a motion, Commissioner England.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner England, seconded by, or by Commissioner Green, seconded by Commissioner England. Any further discussion to the motion? Commissioner Hatch?
I have a question on, um, the requirement of having a manned reception desk twenty-four hours. What's your, your thought behind that?
That's a standard operating procedure for a hotel. And it's, it's obviously one city staff thought about. I just want to make sure that it's, uh, that we're maintaining it that is a hotel.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, we are unanimous. Uh, moving on to our last item, discussion item, discussion, uh, regarding several text amendments. We'll let Mr. Murray just take the stage on this one. Thank you.
So am I up then?
You're up, sir.
Okay, so what I thought I'd do is if, uh, Mr. Gardner can just kind of navigate for me, we'll go through until we get to each, uh, highlighted change in yellow. You'll notice that some of these provisions throughout, there's gonna be a couple of main categories. One category is all of the land use titles are twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, so a lot of times, uh, we're not reflecting everything that's applicable. Sometimes title a level eleven comes into play because it's a land disturbance permit. But that's what that's all about. So I can keep scrolling to the next one. And this, we're starting with title fifteen apparently. Fifteen, as you know, is the, uh, permit processing one. This is the one that has the most changes really. It's the one that focused the most on. Uh, we're gonna see some just capitalization type things over and, you know, some kind of hyphenations. But over time, what's happened is we've come up with a standard way of what words get capitalized, what words don't. And so we're just kinda updating those at the same time. Maybe scroll back up to the, uh, yeah, right where it says that. The first kind of substantive change, if you will, is changing these types. Right now, uh, staff is a type one administrative action, type two, uh, is board of adjustment, type three is planning. We're switching that because now the board of adjustment is gonna be kind of the appeal authority for everything other than fees. So staff, then planning commission, and then in some instances you go to the board of adjustment. Anything the council's doing is type four or five. So it's just a matter of, uh, looking at types of applications, so we can scroll down. Yeah. So, yeah, nothing, no real additional changes there. Here, we're just kinda moving a couple of things to be close to each other. We're removing final development plan because as you know, staff used to do final development plans, um, but now we have kind of a master development plan. It starts with staff, goes to planning commission, then goes to council. So we just, that's just where we moved it from one place to another. So stopping here, what does the board of adjustment do under the new format? Where, where they're gonna hear all appeals in the future, uh, rather than just some of them, like I say, other than fees. They're gonna continue to handle all the variances. They're gonna continue to do expansion of non-conforming structure. They're gonna continue to, uh, do interpret, uh, appeals of interpretations that the zoning administrator and others do. Um, what we're adding in D is that any other appeal right now from staff or from you as a planning commission goes to them unless it says otherwise in our ordinance.
So can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
So under the current, if I'm, if, because we've only had one in four years, so we don't do this.
I know, they're not often, yeah.
But when, when we rejected the subdivision plat, or yeah, it was the subdivision plat for a project out west and it got appealed, it got appealed to the city council. What we're saying now is that that goes to the board of variance for the.
Board of adjustment now, exactly.
Board of adjustment that goes, okay.
And the reason being is it ties in directly with the, the change of government because with two separate branches, if something is appealed within the executive branch, it goes to some other level within that executive branch. It can't transfer over to the legislative branch if it's a regular application. So like I say, the one exception that you'll see is for fees. If it's purely financial related with fees, then that's obviously a a council function, um, that would go to them, so. So we can keep scrolling. Uh, now what does the planning commission do? Uh, well, you've got two different areas. You've got the administrative decisions. Of course, you handle preliminary plats. The final still goes to the, back to staff, right Larry? Um, here now you're picking up, uh, phase development plans. We're changing the terminology to conform with some of the recent changes in the ordinance. You remember now with PC zones and so forth, they get an overall master development plan, but then they come back in with a phase development plan for each phase. So we're just updating the terminology. You'd still hear those. Council's not involved anymore with, with some of this, so we struck that part. This last part you're doing is you're making recommendations to the council on all these areas as far as general plan, uh, text amendments, map amendments, um, those kinds of things, including, uh, master development plans. You're, you're making recommendations to the council on those legislative issues. Quasi judicial for you, uh, legislative for them. So then this one is what, scroll up again, what does this say? This is, oh yeah, this is then the what the council does after you've recommended it. This is what the council's doing. We just added a few things on to make it more complete. Uh, of course, uh, they're handling, you know, any of these specialized agreements like reimbursement.
Can I, can you scroll back down? There's a typo that you've missed up there.
Typo, okay.
Two oh nine code AMD, is that supposed to be AMD or is that amended?
Oh, yeah, so that's just the legislative history. That's abbreviation for amended.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Um, so yeah, now type five. So right here, this is the only appeal that the council will do in the future is just a fee. Any kind of fee that's, that's charged uh, by the city for any land use issue, that gets appealed, appealed to the council. Everything else goes to the board of adjustment. Uh, so here, a lot of what you're gonna see now is that we're just, like I say, changing capitalizations. Most everything's lowercase. You don't capitalize a lot of words. Now, instead of the development department or community development department, the current name in the code is development services department, so just a few updates like that. Yeah, that, these are all just updating names. Same kind of thing, just updating capitalizations or names. I don't see any other substantive changes. We can kinda keep moving. I think those are all just name changes, capitalizations. Yeah, stop maybe there.
Let's push the right side. So up, up above, you scrolled through one that talked about the city planner.
Okay.
Is this? So I guess this is one, yeah, that one. Is the city planet, planner and the zoning administrator the same position?
Yes.
And I'm wondering if we shouldn't use the same term consistent through the ordinance?
It's something we're gonna have to look at at some point. We're not able to tackle everything with this. We're focused primarily on just a couple of cosmetic things and complying with the change of government. There's a lot of other things we're gonna have to go back through and consider. It's hard to tell if there's a, but right now they are the same person. Mr. Gardner is currently the city planner and zoning. Uh, but we've got to decide in the future, is that really one position? Do we want to keep them so they can be split up? That's a bigger animal than we can tackle with currently, but Larry probably has some comments there.
And Salt Lake City, Provo, and I believe West Valley City, um, the city planner is one position and the zoning administrators another position, so in this city, we've always just chosen to combine it. Um, there's really no issue with that, but, uh, some of the other communities that, the zoning administrator usually shares some kind of other duty, usually related to building services or something like that. But as Duncan said, you know, it'll be evaluated in the future whether they wanna, I really don't. And Scott, it's a vegetarian issue, but there's, the workload's not there that you need to do a separate position for. It's basically zoning administrator wouldn't be doing much. Much of, you know, there's a few determinations and, you know, you know, compliance letters and things like that, but it's, it's not a huge workload, so.
So we can probably keep scrolling then down a little bit. That's just all cosmetic, keep going. They're just adding in the different title numbers here. Yeah, there was this old provision that dealt with, um, forwarding different things to the planning commission in different months. Part of what I look at during some of these cosmetic changes is, is there something that's archaic where it doesn't match what you're currently doing? And my understanding is you're not doing this, so why have it, remove it? That's all that was. Um, of course, Larry still has to kind of finish his review, but so then we can keep going through. Just more cosmetic changes, updating the name of master development plans to the preliminary. This one we, uh, are looking at eliminating uh, because we don't have a separate final development plan process anymore. We have the sub-area plans, right Larry, or follow-up that staff does, so. That's again, just bringing it up to speed with the other ordinance changes you've recently had and what your current practice is. More cosmetic changes. Appeals is the last main thing. This is probably the very most important part of everything we're talking about. Here we had all these appeals going every which direction before, right? Now all we're talking about is appeals to the city council, which are just fees, appeals to the board of adjustment for virtually everything else. Uh, there are a couple of special appeals to the board of building appeals or appeal of a land disturbance permit or a conditional use. Those are the only smaller things called out, but this first paragraph, we just pulled in from another one so that we could put all the general provisions in one place. Then if we scroll down, yeah, there's no appeals to the planning commission anymore. They're just going to the board of adjustment. Uh, appeals to city council, again, it's just for fees, board of, more of adjustment. We're throwing everything else in there. And that's just making it clear, the board of adjustment has all their options, how they can deal with the appeal, some cosmetic changes, so let's stop here on these.
You know what, it's, you're coming up with chapter six, nevermind.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll scroll up just a bit though, and then we'll get to six. So right here, maybe a little bit more where you've got appeal to, yeah, board of building appeals right there. So this is if somebody wants to appeal what the building official says. This is by state law and it's actually more specifically in a different part of our code. Title ten, chapter three, we're referencing title ten there. Um, it's just referencing back to that. We have a special board of building appeals. It's makeup, we've never really used one. Uh, but it's, we have the provisions for it in title ten, chapter three, but it's set by state code and it gets appealed directly to district court from there if somebody wants to further appeal. So that one's just by state law. Then if you go to the next one.
So.
Yeah?
So when, when it says maybe further appeal to district court, that's actually in the statute?
Hmm, that's right in the statute, yeah.
Because the, the reason why I asked that and the other one, probably the other one we'll see, is that there was that one case in Utah County not too long ago that they said that they could appeal it to district court and they said, no, we don't have jurisdiction over it or whatever, it was some funky case that.
So and the other option you have is you can appeal it to, uh, if a city wants to, they can set their code where instead of it going to our own board of building appeals, you can go to the regular state one. But it makes more sense to communicate, so there are those two options. Um, land disturbance, uh, permits, um, here we have them going to board of adjustment if somebody wants to appeal the city engineer's decision. And then lastly, was there something after that? Oh yeah, conditional use. Now currently it says that, um, the development services director, uh, can revoke a conditional use permit. I don't know that that's really happened, right, since you've been in the position. But that's the way it currently reads, um, and that had to be appealed somewhere currently. Current code said city manager, so I just put board of adjustment in there if, if everything other than what state law says or the, with fees, everything else goes to the board of adjustment. I just figured board of adjustment.
What, it says board of adjustment or his designate? Is there only one member of the board of adjustment?
Oh, I missed that. That's a good catch. That or his designate should be.
I was making me nervous that we had one person that could override every decision that, that we make up here.
It's, yeah, the board of adjustment is five people plus an alternate. I meant to strike city manager or his designate, so it should just read board of adjustment. Period, so let me make a note of that. That's fifteen, five, six.
I, my question was gonna be is, is, and I, I get why you're doing board of adjustment, but it almost seems like if the planning commission approved it, the planning commission ought to be the one taking it away. But that's just a.
I'm Duncan, other, other communities I've worked with had a strong mayor. Um, that's exactly the way it was done, is it was brought back before hearing before the planning commission. And the planning commission, um, could choose to revoke or not.
So you, you guys want to do that instead?
I think that's fair.
Yeah, and then.
The board of justice should be there if they don't like our decision.
Yeah, and then if the plan, if they, and I've actually was involved in several CUP revocations and none of them liked it, and so they all went to the board of adjustment. And then they basically got the same, you know, they, they have, it's more of a, at that point, it becomes more of an evidence-based, you know, this is what they're not doing and this is why it should be revoked. And then that would all be, um, you know, just like, take the one tonight, for instance, say, uh, you know, six months we go out and inspect and it's, now I've lived here for.
Makes more sense to come back to the same body that originally.
Then it would come back to the planning commission and they could either plead their case why that was incorrect. And then the planning commission could choose to revoke or not, and then if they wanted to appeal that, it would go onto the board of adjustment.
Okay, the, the only thing that I'd recommend is that you don't want multiple levels of appeal internally. So I'd say if you want to change it to planning commission, maybe that's, they're done at the planning commission level and it just goes to court from there. It would be my recommendation.
This doesn't seem like multiple levels. It seems like if we have a reason to revoke a conditional use, they would come before us, we'd have a hearing, that we're making a, an initial decision on correct. And then the board of adjustment would be the appealing body of our decision.
So what you're saying is rather than the development services director making the decision, the planning commission would make the decision?
Yeah, we wouldn't be an appellate body. We would be the ones making the decision on whether or not to revoke a, a, a conditional use. That would then leave the, the board of appeals to appeal or the. That would then leave the the board of appeals to appeal, or the board of adjustment to appeal any decision we make.
Yeah, Mr. Langford's gonna look up the.
There seems to be a a chunk of it missing because it it jumps straight to uh saying. My position revokes it, and then they can appeal my decision to the board or to the, there there's a section that leads up to the my revoca- the revocation. From 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 my position, which I'm not seeing here.
So maybe it's part of that yellow stricken out part that's right up above.
So just to clarify, so they would come to, the 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 process would come to you, you'd make that decision, you're not making a recommendation to us, you're making that decision solely?
I'm making a final, final action after it's reviewed by like the the planning commission.
So we would have a review process and then make a recommendation to you. I'm just trying to say, is it, if there's, if you're making the decision on your own without our input, then then there's no need for us to be an appellate body.
Okay.
But if we're involved, then we, I mean, there's no reason for us to be the appellate body in this, right, we just make sure we know when the board of adjustment gets involved.
Okay, so what you're talking about is if we can find that other provision, if it if it says that you're recommending. The development services director is making a final decision, you're okay with it being appealed to the board of adjustment? If they don't like that decision that you've been a part of, okay. And Scott's looking that up. Thirteen, seven E, ten through thirteen. Is uh, yeah, may be revoked, a conditional use permit may be revoked by the community development director after review and recommendation by the planning commission. Okay, so we just had to go, so maybe what I'll do is I'll make a reference to connect these two sections together if they're referring to each other. Um, and then making it clear, uh.
So we would have a revocation hearing here, make a recommendation to you, you would make your decision based upon our recommendation. And then that decision could then be appealed to the board of adjustments, that's what we did, okay.
Okay, so everybody's comfortable with that, then, okay, I'm glad we forgot that, so then this most important last one is just, of course, anything. Can be when it's, somebody's exhausted their administrative remedies, which in our case is usually the board of adjustment, could be the city council if it's a fee. Could be the city council if it's a legislative action, but once our final decision has been made. Then of course they can always ask for judicial review in district court, so. Alright, anything else on, that's the toughest one, title fifteen, it's short but a lot in there. Okay, so then what do we have next? Got twelve, and you're looking, there's, yeah, there's not many on signs, now keep in mind when we go to, we've looked at, started a process at one point to substantively. Uh, make a lot of changes in signs, and there'll be a lot, but here we're just making cosmetic service uh changes primarily, most of these are just. Uh, updating current words, changing or uncapitalizing words, pretty much just cosmetic in signs. Not a lot to do with the change of government in signs, a lot substantively, but we're not doing the substantive comply with first amendment kinda stuff now. I think there's another couple far down. Let's see, yeah, just another cosmetic change, might something there, uh, yeah, so that's some actual. Um, change of government stuff there, we obviously can't have, the the city manager no longer exists. Here we're dealing with removal of billboards, there might be a issue here of complying with state law that we'll have to deal with later, but for the. For the, currently at least, the mayor instead of the city manager, and of course, there's no advice and consent for the council needed for something like this, so. Yeah, so that's all we had on that one, there's really not much. Yeah, let's do fourteen next, okay, so this is your subdivision code, a lot of, some more cosmetic stuff. Yeah, so you'll also see some other changes in title, like in the future, we don't call it a clerk recorder, just a recorder, the recorder will continue to do all the same things other than. Taking minutes, which a council clerk will do, so, or some other title. Most of this, not a lot of change of government stuff because you're already uh handling all the subdivisions, there's a lot of cities where the council gets involved in subdivisions. And if they change the council mayor form of government, they have to stop doing that, uh, there, so that is kind of a change of government change there, flag lots, they're not involved in that, that's purely administrative, that's. Staff and planning commission, so we took the council out of that, half streets require the approval of the council, we just put the reason. It's because normally we want them part of a development agreement, and they do, they do approve development agreements. Uh, more cosmetic changes. Yeah, just cosmetic changes. And that's it for that one. Alright, so then title thirteen's the only one left, right? So it starts off with a lot of changes to, from city manager to city administrator. Uh, the city administrator's doing most of the day to day kinda functions, or whoever he appoints to, to delegate those things to. The mayor's main responsibility is appointing different people, here we got rid of, oh, we just changed the. Definition there, city manager to city administrator, I guess I should keep the word city, so that's a typo we found. Again, we're really good at kinda keeping, there's not many administrative things that the council was doing, so there's not a whole lot to. To undo, in a lot of senses, we were already acting like we had two branches of government, um, again, just changes to development services as far as wording. Um, here we also updated some um names, we have a code enforcement division now that's doing a lot of what police department used to do. That's pretty much it there. Same thing, just updating titles, names, oh, here we had, uh. Yeah, really, that just, that's pretty much it, no real substantive change there, just changing capitalizations and names. Oh, let's see, what's that office there, go go back down, no, the other way, office of. Oh yeah, so there's really nothing there either, there were a couple places where we've had office of development assistance, which we just say. Um, development services department now, cuz we don't have office of development assistance anymore, those are the people that take the applications. So yeah, just more cosmetic changes, city recorder is the official title. City administrator instead of manager, I think pretty much all of this is cosmetic.
I'm glad you're the one that had to read this and not us.
Unfortunately, there's a, the executive direct, oh wait, stop at that one where it says district court, the uh, we have an. Executive assistant in our office that's able to help with some of this too, which is very good, um, let's see, tch tch tch, variances. Remind us what that is, Larry.
I haven't seen that like in.
But what we have now is anything, any appeal from the board of adjustment on subsection C there is now remember going directly to. Uh, district court, so we used to have this internal appeal where people do multiple levels of appeal and eventually end up in the council. Remember that your final appeal now under the new ordinance is internal appeal is the board of adjustment unless it's a fee. Or one of those other special ones, and then from that exhausts the administrative remedies, then you go right to district court, so that's. Flood plane overlay, okay.
I had no idea that we had a flood plane overlay, thank heaven we don't have to worry about that much.
Yeah, and then we just got rid of the, any appeal from council because they're not doing those appeals. Yeah, just more capitalizations, name updates, all of that. Yeah, no substantive changes there, okay, what do we got here, same thing, just updating names.
Just putting lipstick on a pig.
Yeah, and it's still a pig. Yeah. See, what do we got going there, oh, that was just to remind us that one one of the things, as I was going through this change of government process, at the same time, you were making substantive changes, like with the. Interchange overlay zone, so we wanted to mark, hey, this is a change that you just did, in fact, the council just approved that one last night, right, so we just.
So all the ILZ is exempt from the cap and grade?
Well, they they approved the regular interchange over zone last week, but this, yeah, this exemption right here was last night, taking it out of the, making an exemption to the cap and grade, yeah. Yeah, and that's just reminding us that other ordinance. Some more cosmetic stuff. And. Yeah, and that's just lower casing. And just more lowercase. Yep, same.
We're so excited, it's right at the end.
Yep, so that's it, so I think we covered it all, so those are the main changes, is basically just some of the appeal process, so.
Excellent, uh, Commissioner Green.
So the the funky case I was talking about, and you you may just wanna go pull it and look to see if this affects us, it's uh Downs V Thompson. And it was a Utah Supreme Court case that was decided. August twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, cuz it talks about Utah County under ordinance. Saying that their decision could be appealed to district court, and Supreme Court said, no, you can't do that, so. It's just something just that, to take a look at, just make sure we're in compliance with that.
Probably can, I'll compare it against the ten nine A eight hundred series, which says generally, everything is. Uh, reviewable, I mean technically, we call it an appeal, a lot of times it's technically judicial review, approximately the same thing, but.
It's probably worth a, it's just probably worth a shot.
Definitely read it, and maybe they've carved out an exception to the general rule of everything can be judicially reviewed or appealed to district court, so. Uh, I'll check it out, thanks, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
Well, one question I wanna ask, um. Regarding lighting in these developments that we do, what kind of, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, after the fact. Rules can we apply, can we add requirements to increase lighting, do we need to make an amendment on code for what the lighting plan looks like, we had a. Conversation with some some residents about the lighting at the uh, the Novi subdivision and and a assault that happened over there. And so they've been concerned about the lighting, I'm just wondering if we've got, if we need to take a look at our lighting plans and see if we need to update that. If we can go back and enforce something new on the develop, the developers, say, look, we need some more lights out there, or better lighting. Yeah, that's the same one, the Novi, yeah, it's that's Novi, it's a dead TOD over there.
I I would have to look at it, uh, but uh, we've we've got light, you know, light bleed, you know, we can't spill over, um. Of the neighboring properties, but it's really, there's not a whole lot to to go off as, as far as uh, minimum lumens required in parking lots, um. But that's something we can look at.
I'm just wondering if we can look at the lighting plan back when that was approved, apparently there's this black dead zone. And and the and the subsequent changes that were made, never mind Scott, but I I wonder if it's even possible. Apparently there's a dead zone between this, the track station and the garage, and it may be because there's multiple owners in there, but that's, that was the concern.
Yeah, we, and I encourage the people to go on and they could file the the complaint or the the request for, you know, services through the city, so that they could get that done, I'm hoping that was done, but. I thought it was, you know, that's something we talk about in our in our discussions regarding this lighting plans, and I'm wondering if it's something we need to take a look at and see if there's a way to improve it. Um, especially regarding this dead zone, if that's a, something that needs to be addressed immediately.
If if it's in the public right of way, there is that that, I believe it's a public street that wraps around in between the station and uh. And the parking garage, that's something that that's under our jurisdiction that we would have more control over, if it's private property, then that's a different conversation.
Yeah, I I haven't been over there myself, I just know that that's the conversation that that Cal and I both participated in, and I wondered if we could just direct somebody to go over and take a look at it and see what. What needs to be done, what can be done, and if possibly from a staff standpoint, if we can't look at an improvement to the actual lighting guidelines before we approve the next development.
I'll have someone from Public Works go and take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
So one question was, did the attack occur in the garage or outside of the garage?
Outside.
But it was adjacent to the UTA garage.
Someplace in between there, I. So.
There is a space. Um, but me and my wife actually drove out there not too long ago, right after the attacks occurred, and there is a space right in between the two, that it is a dead zone. And I'm not sure whose property, I don't believe it is UTA, but I don't believe it's the the apartment building either, so.
Where exactly, cuz after I get off out here, I'm just gonna drive over there, cuz it's right down the road, so.
It's on the s- north, kinda the west part, but if you see where the track station is. And then kind of where, there's kind of like a little pathway that goes towards where the um, parking structure is, it's right along that road right there, on the very far north. Road that kinda loops around.
Okay, I'll go look out.
Okay, anything else? Alright, uh. We are adjourned until, what, December third? Happy Thanksgiving.